Okay, good morning. Today is Tuesday, June 3, 2025. This is a regular meeting of the Kings County Board of Supervisors. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Here.
Richard Valley is absent. Doug Verboon.
Here.
Rusty Robinson.
You're Robert there.
Here. Four members present, one absent. Do we have Lori Niles here this morning? Good morning, Lori. So would you all please rise for invocation from Pastor Lori Niles, Hamford Layton Anothering Church? Thank you.
Thank you. Good to be here this morning. Holy and loving Creator God, we pause in these opening moments of this meeting to come before you with gratitude and humility. We're aware of the weight carried by these leaders and we thank you for them. You've entrusted them with the care of communities and the shaping of policies and the building of futures. So Lord, grant to them wisdom to lead with fairness and courage and compassion. Help them to listen well to those with power and to those without and to discern what is right from what is merely popular. As they balance today's needs with tomorrow's hopes, may they be guided by your truth, by integrity and by the desire to serve the common good. Bless this meeting with clarity and cooperation and a shared vision so that what is decided here today may honor the dignity of every person and plant seeds of justice for generations to come. And Lord bless these individuals with a sense of purpose and joy in their work today. Amen.
At San Felipe.
Yes, sir.
Do you need us to fly through the screen?
Absolutely. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a sincere republic of which stands on a nation under God, universal, where it is tested for all.
Hey, at this time, we'll go to item number two, which is employee recognition. And we'll start with Arian Martinez. Period.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Kerry Martinez, CAO. I wanted to invite Chief Louis Navarres to the podium to present Employee of the Year quarter for the first quarter of 2025. Matthew San Filippo Matt joined Kings County in 2005 and started with the fire department in 2009, where he is currently the battalion chief. Matt has demonstrated remarkable commitment to his team and his proactive approach and willingness to go above and beyond, have significantly contributed to the fire department's success and morale. Matt has consistently demonstrated more remarkable commitment to the community that the fire department serves. Matt is responsible for the fire department's training. In February 2024, Matt was selected as interim assistant fire chief. He filled the position until December of 2024. During his tenure, he continued to take on the responsibility of fire departments' training. This included developing and implementing new training programs for both new recruits, veteran firefighters, which focus on the latest firefighting techniques and safety protocols. Even after Matt's interim responsibilities concluded, he continued to take the initiative on various projects such as applying for state and federal grants, spearheading a comprehensive inventory of firefighting equipment, identifying outdated tools, and advocating for necessary upgrades to ensure that the team has the best resources available. For all those reasons, Matt has been chosen for Employee of the Quarter 2025 and he will receive $300 in the next pay period. At this time, Chief would like to say a few words.
Morning, Chief.
Morning, Chairman, Supervisors and County Administration. I don't want to be redundant, Kerry, but you read my spill there. But I do want to take the time to congratulate Matt. Matt has supported the department. He's a dedicated employee to this county, not just to the fire service itself, but he takes the initiative. He's not afraid to take on any role. Anytime he has any challenge in front of him, he's always willing to step up and learn from it. He'll always tell you, I don't know how to do it, but I'm going to learn from it. But, you know, he's really dedicated and can't pass him up. You got to acknowledge these type of people. Matt, you want to step up? Congratulations, Matt.
Congratulations, Matt. You want to say a few words, introduce your family?
Today I have my wife with me and my mother-in-law. I said when I was notified about the dishonor given to me that you don't get here without a team. You do not get up here without other people contributing. And I can name a long list of people that I work with probably deserve this just as well. So appreciate it. Appreciate the recognition and the confidence you guys have put in me. Humbled, very humbled. So, thank you.
I'm the candidate.
We're not done. Well, if you all know, we don't have a fire chief. We've had events here. We've had a fire chief leave, but really the sun's back. We've got something tomorrow for you to believe, right?
Yes, tomorrow we have a going. Yes. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I wanted to formally thank Chief Navarres for service today. Will be his last board meeting. His last day will be on Friday. So Chief Navarres stepped in during a critical time following the departure of a former fire chief and provided leadership throughout significant challenges, especially during the passing of Captain Eads. He helped us navigate through some challenges and unknown times during a period where we were recruiting a new fire chief, and also we didn't have an assistant fire chief, which is no small task. We thank him for being with us and coming out of retirement to be here with us. I know, you know, the retirement life is waiting for you. And so we just wanted to publicly thank you for being with us during this time period. Thank you.
Together, we're okay.
I do want to take this off the screen to thank everybody for all your support and working with all the departments, building relationships, met a lot of good people. I think it's important not to come to fire service, but it's town. I think I learned a lot, dedicated, the duty is, towns, people, a lot of good things coming from town. Thank you all for your support.
Hello, I'm Sarah Dolan. I'm here on behalf of Congressman David Valadeo. We just wanted to be able to present Lizette Fernandez with a congressional recognition and congratulations on earning Employee of the Year. Clearly, you've put a lot of work and dedication into your job. So we just wanted to also be able to give you some congressional recognition for all your hard work. So, thank you.
She already took a day off Monday from her 40 hours.
No, no, she does payroll. You can't let her off a week. All right. Back to business. At this time, we'll go to item number three, unscheduled appearances. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the board on any item of interest within the board jurisdiction and which are not already on the agenda. The board will not answer questions impromptu, and concerns or complaints will be referred to the appropriate staff. For items which are on the agenda, members of the public will be provided with an opportunity to address the board as each item is brought up for discussion. Speaker to limited to two minutes. So, thank you. At this time, do we have any written?
We received written correspondence from Sharon Hibbert, Isaac Lopez, and Michael Moore, and they'll become part of the record. And we have speaker cards. The first speaker would be Caroline Daly.
Morning, Caroline. Come on down. This is on all timers, huh?
You remember?
Well, Barrett, I got a paper here. But I worry about the old timer because, you know, I'm probably going to get it.
Thank you for letting me speak to you. June is Alzheimer's Brain Awareness Month, and that's why I came to ask you to recognize that as a special month awareness. I've given you this, and this was from 2024. And if you can look at that, there's a lot of families that are affected by this, whether they're caregiving or living with Alzheimer's. My husband passed away 15 and a half years ago from Alzheimer's, having to quit work at 59. So, anyway, I'm very involved in being an advocate. I'm going to Washington DC this Saturday for the Alzheimer's Forum and speaking to different congressmen and just advocate, and I will advocate until I can't anymore. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you for coming here today. I appreciate it.
The next speaker we had to have is Red Fidiassi.
Good morning.
Good morning. Hello, my name is Red Fidiassi, and I'm a representative from Valley Voices. We would like some clarification pertaining to item D1B on the regular calendar, specifically the budget constraints on a public defender's office and if it's financially stable to continue contracting from other law firms instead of having Kings County public defenders. We have heard concerns from constituents about the fairness of our current system and how some people may be hesitant to rely on private lawyers who might have a bias against them. Thank you.
Thank you.
That is all the speaker cards we have, and it doesn't appear anybody online has their names.
Oh, we have one more. Just take name and address for the record, please.
My name is Paula Massey, and I live here in Hamford, California. I'm here representing Women with Visions Unlimited. And this is our second year hosting a Juneteenth celebration. We did it last year at the Longfield Center. And this year, I'm coming because we didn't have any representatives from the county supervisor's office. And even though it's in Hamford, it's in Kings County, and Hamford is the seat of the county, I would love, Mr. Rusty, I would love to have you come and have a few words at this event. I have flyers here, little handout flyers. We start at 11 o'clock. We'll have all kinds of vendors, food vendors, things for kids. We're also having a peach cobbler contest, $150 for the winner. And so we're having a lot of fun out there, a lot of things for the kids, a lot of education, fashion show. We're having a spades and dominoes tournament. And so we just want everybody to be a part of it. But I'm coming to let you guys know that. We love to see you out there. Rusty, if you can't make it, get one of your other partners here to come. But I'd really love to see you. Okay, because you represent our district. Okay, thank you very much. And everybody, yes?
I think we had this comment last year. He didn't show up.
No. I'm here again. And I'm letting you guys know now. So just in case you have something planned for next weekend, you can cancel it and show up at two hours. Okay? Thank you very much.
And the white peaches are being harvested now. So that's.
Oh, yeah, we had, we only had two people last year to enter the contest. So it was one or the other. This year, we're going to have more. We had over 300 people last year at this event still be looking for more. We're going to have food vendors like barbecue, fried fish, you know, all that good stuff. Just come on out and enjoy time with us. Okay?
Would you like Rusty to do a full report when he comes back?
Well, yeah. And I'll be here to see that you do that report.
Would you, would you share your telephone number with, with CAO?
Yeah, I will.
Thank you. And I'll get it. Thank you so much.
Anybody else in the audience have anything they want to say? Sheriff, you coming down? How you doing today?
Back to follow. I'll readily admit that.
I'm trying to get her to bring some peach cobbler here to the podium, you know?
I like that a lot. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dave Robinson, Kings County Sheriff. You know, we had the unfortunate tragedy of Captain Eads passing in the line of duty. And when that event occurred, Chairman Verboon and I spoke about establishing a monument here at the county government complex. We have that quote, and I will forward it to Madam CAO. I'm here to help through our Sheriff's Foundation to get that monument established. And I know all the fire guys left. I was hoping they were going to stick around, but I understand. And I look forward to, hopefully, we'll have that on the agenda soon for your Board of Supervisors to make that an official moment in time. Joe, if I remember correctly, October is the firefighter memorial timeframe. And so timing wise, we're in a good position to get this established for the upcoming firefighters memorial. So I just wanted to update your board on that. We do have the official quote, and I have that here, and I will make sure to forward that.
Thank you for your work. I know I made a few phone calls. Fire guys are going to handle it right now. I think they brought Joe into it. So looking forward to that being done. But it is government. And even though it is October, that will take everything we got right now.
Yeah.
We have public works here today. Yeah.
Yeah, anything I could do to help. And, you know, if we need to get some donations or whatever, I'm here to help. But I just wanted you guys to know that we do have the official quote now.
So thank you.
Same size as the SO?
That's a great question. I have it in the quote, but I'd have to put my glasses on.
I think at one time, talking about it.
Yeah, it's supposed to be close and similar. Yep, yep.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
And for the record, you know, we don't have one for firefighters out there now because we've never had a firefighter pass away during on duty. So that leads to a revenue stream that we can do this. And so this is the first chance we've ever had in 125 years we've been here. So it shows how it's a serious job they take, but we've been very lucky. No one's been injured.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience? Okay, nobody online, right? We're good. All right, we'll go on down to the approval of minutes. Item A, report out of closed session from special meeting on May 19, 2025.
Yes, Board, there was no closed session on May 19, 2025. So there's no report out there for item B, report out of closed session from the regular meeting for May 20, 2025. I previously reported out that a motion was made by supervisors there with the second by Supervisor Robinson to waive the attorney-client privilege with respect to the report of investigation by S.K. Nelson and Company for the complaint of Tyler Stanley. Each supervisor individually voted in favor with Supervisor Valley absent.
Okay. And then how about report out of approval of the minutes from regular meeting May 20, 2025. Moved by Supervisor Robinson, second by Supervisor Nevs. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Yes. 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 One in favor, one absent. Thank you very much. Item five, consent counter. All items listed on the consent counter are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. If a board member has questions, requests additional information, or wishes to comment on an item, the vote should not be taken until after questions have been addressed or comments made, and the public had an opportunity to commit on the consent counter items.
Mr. Chairman.
What's your pleasure? I miss something?
Mr. Chairman, I believe that we are going to consider pulling D1 on the consent calendar.
Yes.
Regular.
That was okay with that.
Move to the opposite consent counter as amended.
Okay, we have motion to on the counter amended, second by Supervisor Robinson. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Robert there.
Yes. One in favor, one absent. And now we'll go to item D1, Job Training Office. I believe that the comment on there was, one word was misrepresented. Instead of saying Kings County, it says King.
Laura, are you going to come up to present?
Thank you for the opportunity. I was just texting Juliette. They pulled it. So that was a typo on our part. I'm Laura Vacania, Kings County Job Training Office. That was a typo. We would request that that be amended, approved as amended. It should say Kings. It's definitely here in Kings County.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Move as amended, Mr. Chairman, by Supervisor Nevs. Any questions from the audience? No second. Second by Supervisor Robinson. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Robert there.
Yes. Okay, thank you. We'll move on now to the regular calendar. And we have item A, Community Development Agency, Chuck Kenny. Morning, Chuck.
Morning. Morning, members of the board. Chuck Kenny, Community Development Agency. Come before you today to report out from last night's planning commission meeting where they had one item of business to consider, which was the Bentley Code Text Change 668.19, which proposes to make amendment to the code to allow for outdoor advertising signs within the CN Zone District, as well as increasing the size of an outdoor advertising structure from 240 square feet to 450 square feet. And of the commissioners present, it was unanimously passed. So it will be coming to your board in the near future.
Any questions from the board?
Chuck, were these permanent or temporary signage?
These will be permanent.
So these are permanent structures only, not the temporary?
Correct.
Very good. Thank you.
Any questions from the audience? Hang on, I'll bring it back to the board. Move to accept. Moved by Supervisor Nevs, second by Supervisor there. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Robert there.
Yes. Or in favor, one absent. I can start making signs now. That's good.
We have to come back to your board first.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, it takes me a while to make them.
Mr. Chair, before we move on, can we back up to four D approval of the minutes from the regular meeting for May 2025? I don't think we considered that item.
For which one?
Yeah, I don't think we're reading.
For, for D. Approval of the minutes from, we'll go back to approval of minutes. So item D, approval of the minute from regular meeting, May 20, 2025. Moved by Supervisor Robinson, second by Supervisor Nevs. It's either going to be the 20th or 19th. We're going to approve those, right? I think I did the 20th already.
Where did you do in the 19th?
Okay, 19th. Okay, go 20. Take Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Robert there.
Yes. Right, thank you. More in favor. We'll move on now to elections. Item 6B. Loopy, good morning, Loopy.
Good morning. Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Hope you guys having a good morning. Lupi Villa with the Elections Office. I cover 42% and to ask the board approve the HAVA agreement number 24GS and George 27116, meant to invest into the enhancement of election technology and security. In 2002, the Help America Vote Act, also known as HAVA, was signed into law. The Help America Vote Act, also known as HAVA, requires localities and states to meet uniform election technology and administration requirements applicable to federal elections. The HAVA agreement before you is intended to assist the Elections Department with addressing identified fiscal and technological deficiencies related to election security and technology. It is my intent to utilize the funds of $15,789 in reimbursable HAVA funds to address the deficiencies related to our voting and election management systems. Last year, I came in and we had a agreement of $135,000. Those funds were used to improve our building security. We replaced the front doors. We improved our FOB system, access control systems. We replaced our counter windows. So we took several steps to include the fiscal, the fiscal security of the building. $15,789 is not enough to do much. You can barely get your windows clean with that amount of money. So what I intend to do is combine that with leftover money from the previous year, and we're expecting another small grant come in a couple months. So we'll combine them together to improve the servers that we have for our voting systems. So that is the intent of this HAVA agreement. The agreement does have requirements that are being met by Kings County, just like any other HAVA agreement. We continue to meet them. So if you fail to meet those requirements, there's no reimbursement. So we met them before and we can continue to do so moving forward. So I ask the board to please approve the HAVA agreement number 24G 27116. And the agreement's being reviewed and approved as informed by county council. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the board and comments? Anybody want to clean his windows for 15 grand?
$15,000, yeah.
You had a window.
I'm sorry?
You got a window?
In my office?
Yeah, one.
I have no windows. Actually, I do have windows, but they look out into the bullpen. So I never open them. I don't want to see them. Yeah. So, but yeah, it's not enough money. It's $15,000. They're just coming our way, which is great, but it's not enough to purchase or to upgrade any of our systems, just nearly enough, you know. So if we combine that with leftover funds from last year and with future funds, we'll be able to do some of the things that we have planned, like upgrading our servers that are antiquated from 2019. So it's time to move forward. That is the goal.
We got a motion by Supervisor Robinson. Do we have any questions from the audience? Motion, we have a second. Second by Supervisor there. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Robert there.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you. You guys, have a good day.
Four in favor, one absent. We'll go now to IT, and we have John Devlin. Morning, John. Four in favor, one absent. Uh we'll go now to IT and we have John Devlin. Morning, John.
Good morning. Um before you, we have a Central Square Technical Support Services renewal for Finance Enterprise. Uh Kings County currently has a technical support services agreement with Superioron Solutions. For the support of Finance Enterprise, which is the county's finance system. This agreement automatically renews on July first, twenty twenty five. Superioron Solutions has since merged with Central Square and amendment under the revised vendor name is now necessary. Uh there is an impact to the general fund with this action. The costs of the one year renewal is eighty six thousand, two hundred and sixty three dollars. Which is included in the Department of Finance's fiscal year twenty five, twenty six requested budget. This is an increase of fifteen hundred and thirty dollars from fiscal year twenty four, twenty five. The recommendation is to approve this First Amendment with Central Square for Finance Enterprise Technical Support effective July one, twenty twenty five. Through June thirty, twenty twenty six. I'm here for any comment or questions.
Any comments or questions from the board? Any comments or question in the audience? Say nothing, I'll bring it back to the board for direction. So movement, Chair. Motion by supervisor Nevs, second by supervisor Robinson, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Joan Nevs.
Yes.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Robert there.
Yes.
Four in favor. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go to administration and we have Giselle Hoyt. Morning, Giselle.
Morning, Mister Chairman, members of the board. Giselle Hoyt, administrative analyst, Kings County Administration. Before you this morning is a resolution to amend the indigent defense fee schedule, which will impact the compensation for contracted and non-contracted attorneys. Providing indigent services in Kings County. As required by the Trial Court Funding Act, the county contracts with a panel of independent attorneys to provide public defender services. Unlike thirty three other counties in California, Kings County does not maintain its own public defender's office. But instead relies on contracted legal services to meet indigent defense needs. This resolution seeks to repeal resolution number twenty four oh three nine and amend the indigent defense fee schedule. To include both non-contracted attorneys and contracted conflict attorneys who are appointed due to conflicts. The main change proposed is to increase the hourly rate for these attorneys from the current seventy five dollar per hour, which has been placed in place for over thirty years. To a hundred and fifty dollars per hour to better reflect the actual cost of legal services and address the growing demand for defense attorneys. The anticipated fiscal impact of the updated fee schedule is an increase of four hundred and thirty one thousand. Which will be incorporated into the recommended budget for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six. This increase accounts for higher costs associated with the updated hourly rates, the indigent defense contracts and conflict billing. These revisions are necessary to ensure that the county's compensation structure remains competitive and fair for the attorneys providing these critical legal services. Historically, Kings County has engaged contracted attorneys by case type, including misdemeanor, juvenile dependency, delinquency. Lanternman, Petrus, short conservatorship, felony, prison and post conviction. When conflicts arrive, alternative attorneys must be appointed, which can involve multiple tiers depending on the complexity of the case. The indigent defense system has undergone several changes over the years, particularly following the enactment of Assembly Bill one oh nine. Which shifted parole revocation responsibilities to local courts and increased the burden on indigent defense services. Previously, non-contracted attorneys were compensated under resolution. Number zero, three, seven, seven, and in fiscal year twenty eleven, twenty twelve. The county added a full-time conflict contracted attorney and established a secondary panel for additional conflict appointments. The compensation structure continued to to evolve with resolution number fourteen, zero, six, zero and twenty fourteen. Allowing contracted attorneys to bill for parole revocation hearings and further expansion in twenty sixteen to permit them. To bill for conflict appointments beyond their contract scope. However, this led to significant higher costs. Due to the combination of flat rate contracts and additional billing under the fee schedule. After a detailed analysis starting in twenty twenty one, it became evident that the current structure under resolution number twenty four, zero, three, nine. Was unsustainable and lacked transparency. In June twenty twenty four, the board approved the repeal of resolution number twenty four, oh, three, nine. And this new proposal aims to ensure that the contracted attorneys cannot build beyond the scope of their existing agreements. The increase in the hourly rate is intended to address the rising costs of legal services while providing more consistent compensation across the panel of attorneys. The updated fee schedule is also expected to be used minimally as the county is in the process of establishing a dedicated conflict panel. Which will help streamline the process and reduce reliance on ad hoc conflict appointments. The rationale for this change is to create a more transparent compensation system, ensuring that the attorneys are adequately compensated for their services. While keeping costs manageable for the county. The updated structure will help mitigate future cost escalations and better align compensation with the actual demands placed on the indigent defense system. Staff will continue to monitor the use of the resolution to ensure that any necessary amendments are made in the future to maintain fiscal sustainability. At this time, we respectfully ask your board to repeal resolution number twenty four, oh, three, nine and adopt the proposed resolution. To amend the indigent defeat, indigent defense fee schedule. I'm available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Have any questions from the audience? Any comments from the audience? Say nothing, I'll bring it back to the board.
So movement, Chair.
Move by supervisor Nevs, second by supervisor Robinson, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Joan Nevs.
Yes.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Robert there.
Yeah.
Four in favor, one absent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, number two. Curia Martinez.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Curia Martinez, Administration. So before your morning, for consideration is appointment of acting county road commissioner on December thirteenth, twenty twenty four, the former county public works director. Resigned from his position at Kings County and with the departure, the county was left without a road commissioner. As the former public works director was the road commissioner. As required under California Streets and Highway Code, the board of supervisors of each county shall appoint a single road commissioner for the road districts in the county. Every person who is appointed road commissioner after December of nineteen sixty five shall be a registered civil engineer. This means that the board does not appoint an acting road commissioner by June eleventh of twenty twenty five. The county would miss on out on funds paid by highway user tax account in the transportation tax fund. Until it compli- and complies with the California Street and Highway Code. Public Works Chief Engineer Mitchell Cabrera is a registered civil engineer and qualifies to serve as the acting road commissioner as defined by the California Streets and Highway Code. On May twentieth, twenty twenty five, the board adopted an ordinance regarding the consolidation of the offices of county surveyor and road commissioner. The ordinance adds provision that addresses situations where the director of public work lacks the required licensure or qualifications to perform. Road commissioner duties. In such cases, the county may designate an existing employee or employ a part-time contractor to perform those specific duties. Requiring appropriate license. This ordinance will take effect on June nineteenth, twenty twenty five. This action today will allow the board the flexibility to appoint an individual in the future. Like Mitchell Cabrera, who has a licensure to be the road commissioner permanently. Alternatively, the county did solicit a request for proposal for road commissioner and received two. From qualified vendors, Wildan Engineering and Precision Engineering. The board has an option that should they not want to appoint. Um Mitchell today, they also can go with a qualified vendor. It is recommended for the staff, if for from staff to appoint Public Works Chief Engineer Mitchell Cabrera as the county's acting road commissioner. Until such time of a permanent road commissioner is appointed. This action will keep the county's comply compliant with the California Streets and Highway Code. The action that this action would allow time to recruit permanent road commissioner and sufficiently consider RFPs received should the board give direction for us to proceed that. At this time, we request that your board appoint Public Works Chief Engineer Mitchell Cabrera as the acting road commissioner. I am available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments from the board? The motion by supervisor there. Uh do we have any question or comments on the public? Mitchell, you want to say your last rites or anything? Good. Were you aware of this or you just got pushed in the? All right, all right.
Hey, you showed up anyway? Thank you, Mister Chair.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Uh madam clerk, please call the roll.
Joan Nevs.
Yes.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Robert there.
Yes.
Okay, four in favor, one absent. Congratulations, Mitchell. Uh we have some potholes I want to talk to you about and uh.
Call the commissioner.
He called commissioner. Okay, thank you. Uh what now we have board member announcements and reports. So we'll start with supervisor Nevs.
Uh thank you, Mister Chair. Uh had a meeting at the credit union. Everything's doing well over there. Um attended the breaking the stigma of mental health and substance abuse uh conference at Glad Tidings Church on May twenty second. Memorial Day, the Avenue of Flags was held at Grangeville and um on uh May twenty fourth and then we returned on the twenty sixth. Uh for the ceremony, uh on the twenty fourth, we posted the flags. Um on the twenty sixth was the official uh um uh Memorial Day uh event. The thirty fourth annual uh Corky McFarlane and Edith uh McFarlane Memorial Day Celebration, as it's currently known now. Uh the Marine Corps League of uh Kings County Detachment four fifty five. Posted nine new flags, bringing the total to a thousand and thirty four flags that are posted at the uh Grangeville Cemetery. The uh Kings Wasting Recycling uh meeting held on the twenty eighth, we reviewed all of the reports, used oil collection issues. Are having some problems with some of the certification of that program. Um we're working through that. The spring cleanup events were held. Uh March was Lemoore. April was Corcoran, May was Hanford. Uh continue to work with the California Integrated Waste Management. On a five-year plan and then there's also other five-year permit uh coming up for review uh at the county as well. Um along with my colleagues, we attended the Kings County Housing Authority meeting held on also on the twenty eighth. With reports uh being reviewed and approved. We also increased the utility uh schedule uh that was adjusted effective July first, two thousand and twenty five. And then the board was also informed about section eight program uh being a shortfall uh for the current year. At Laughco, uh we had a meeting on the twenty eighth also uh approving the fiscal year twenty five, twenty six budget. And appointed uh Robert Ramos as the uh public member alternate. And so we welcomed him to onboard for that. Um supervisor Verboon and myself attended the CART meeting. Uh where uh we listened to the draft uh Kings County Emergency Operations Plan is out for comment. Uh we also approved the triennial uh uh performance report, reviewed all of the conditions of employment. For the upcoming year, uh twenty five, twenty six fiscal year and uh the twenty five, twenty six budget was also reviewed and approved. Uh relocation claim for uh Kingsview was discussed and approved at the transit station. Um and construction continues with a December completion time um still holding firm. So hopefully we'll keep going on that. At the uh Kings County Association of Governments, we also had closed the uh unmet transit needs for the public hearing. Um we'll expect that report in a couple of months. The San Joaquin Valley Voice Trip to Washington DC in September was being planned. And the legal counsel contract was extended as well as staff compensation and a discussion. Um and and adjustments were made. The MIQ dinner was held on May thirty first, supporting the school. It was a warm evening, but it was nice uh under the shade and had a little bit of a breeze. And if you got to sit next to one of the fans, it was extremely better. The uh hundred ninth Stratford Portuguese Celebration took place on June first. Had a good crowd for both Saturday and Sunday events and everything went well and they didn't tear much up. So I put it all back together yesterday. So everything's good. King Symphony Orchestra held its uh pop concert uh on June first. The Civic Park um very well attended. Uh another nice evening out uh in front of the Civic and they had kind of a little. Um uh they they're still talking about the Civic Center being uh having the celebration this Saturday. Uh celebrating that centennial. And then at the Kings County Behavioral Health yesterday, we discussed the draft presentation of the annual report that will be coming to this board. Probably July or uh August. Uh the election and chair vice chair. Um they also had a nice printout of everything that uh Kings uh Kings County uh Community Action. Uh the services they provide and it's it was kind of a nice document. It's night kind of nice to have. And the June meeting, even though this is June, it was actually May's meeting, so June's meeting was canceled. And so we will won't meet again until July. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you. I add to supervisor Nevs' agenda. Uh the relocation money was spent uh through Kingsview to move. A rehab facility that's an old DMV building, the round building uh over to the new building. So I noticed that they are already moving into the new building that the CART. Uh CART built there on Main Street and it's a nice facility. Uh that project is, looks like it's going to be ahead of schedule a little bit. And once they're out of their building, we can demolish that building and finish the whole project. But uh it's really vital, you know, it's changing the shape of downtown Hanford. So I think it's gonna be be good to see and uh looking forward to having that all done.
And when that building's gone, it'll be a parking lot. So there's not going to be any construction there. It's it's going to help parking in the area and. And help that whole transition.
All the buses are going to come from Amtrak station to to there, to there. By the there.
Uh thank you, Mister Chair. Uh last Wednesday, uh had the opportunity along with uh Hanford City Councilman Mark Kyris to uh. Meet with Bob Henry out at Kim Waste and we were given a a tour of that facility. I don't know if other, I don't know if all of you have been out there before or not, but. Um learning a lot about garbage. I thought you just put it in a little black can out in front of your house and then it took care of itself. But there's a. There's a uh, there is a significant science to it and uh encourage anyone, it's it's actually pretty uh impressed by the uh. The uh. How it all works. Anyway, um that same evening, um I attended um as part of a committee assignment, the Kings Community Action Organization. Uh monthly board meeting. Um that board meeting, they they. Uh the the board of directors voted for for a handful of of us members to uh travel to Detroit. So we'll be doing that in. August to attend a national convention. Um then on uh Thursday, uh the twenty second, I met with local uh UPC plus. Uh which is United Civil Palsy Plus. Uh their director Victor Perez here in in downtown Hanford. And was given a tour of their facility and and they are, they are funded through first uh five dollars. Um and and very impressive. Uh. I mean, we hear a first five, but then you you don't really see where necessarily those those uh those funds go. But um very impressed with their facility in uh downtown Hanford and um thank uh Victor for that tour. Then on the twenty third, uh I met with uh our deputy uh director of uh HSA, uh Chris Navarro is out of Triangle Court. Just so that I could get a visual observation of of what that project looks like and thank him for his time and out there. And then uh on on Wednesday, along with supervisor Nevs, uh attended the waste, local waste and recycle meeting and then housing authority. And then that same afternoon, um the new Hanford Joint Union High School District Offices with supervisor Verboon and Curia. And and as a thirty five year law enforcement, but I just have to rat on myself as a trained observer, I had no idea the old Hanford Sentinel Building was a uh. Grocery store. I had at one time, yeah, I don't know. Maybe I didn't drive down Sixth Street often enough in a patrol car to know that. Or when did it become a grocery store? Maybe that's.
United, United Markets or something like that.
It was built years ago.
Anyway, I had no idea that was a grocery store, but now I know and we met in their uh beautiful, the the refrigerator apparently of that building. And and got a state of the Hanford Joint Union High School District and and uh it was a good meeting to be a part of. So that's all, Mister Chair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Robinson.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Let's see, way back Friday, May twenty third, my family and I. Had the pleasure of uh going to dinner with past city councilwoman Marcy Buford. She was the longest-serving city councilwoman in Hanford's history. Uh also Wednesday, May twenty eighth, attended housing supervisor Nev stated uh with supervisors. Thursday, May twenty ninth, attended uh a lunch with gubernatorial candidate Steve Hilton. Uh had the pleasure of sitting next to and speaking with a gentleman by the name of Ian, who used to be a speechwriter for for Prime Minister. Uh so that's Prime Minister Cameron. So he was an interesting fellow. Friday, May thirtieth, volunteered at Hanford Christian School and a shout out to Brian Maderas. He uh he led the charge to redo the preschool playground. So thanks to Brian Maderas. Uh and then yesterday, I attended uh Tim Raven's funeral. It was a full house. My uh my condolences to Debbie and the Raven family and uh it was well attended and and he will be missed. Uh and then and then throughout the last couple of of weeks, a lot of phone calls in regards to Armona Park. Uh with uh Armona School, but also with Armona Community Service District. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you. Go now to board correspondence.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. So the board received various reports from the Department of Finance. For the month of April, we had the investment pool portfolio management summary. Treasury report of cash investments and the monthly fund balance. The board also received Moss Adams Report of Independent Auditors on the audit of the financial schedules for the county on SB eighty one local. Uh youth offender financing program dated April twenty ninth. The board received the fire department's. Office Emergency Services Operational Area reported dated May twenty third. The board received uh correspondence from Brian Martin dated May twenty ninth. And the board received correspondence from the Department of Transportation on May twentieth regarding the state route forty one reef capital. Um reef city capital maintenance project. For upcoming events, Kings County Behavioral Health will host its mental health family support group tonight, June third. From five thirty, seven thirty at the Kings Building. Kings County Behavioral Health will host its Survivors of Suicide Support Group tomorrow, Wednesday, June fourth. From five thirty, seven thirty here on campus. For upcoming agenda items, we have quite the agenda for June tenth. Administration has two items agreement with.
Administration has two items, Agreement with Kings County Commission on Aging for the General Fund Contribution, Approving a Finance for Acquisition and Construction for Cal PFA. Behavioral Health has two items, Second Amendment to the Plumlee Board and Care for Adult Residential Care Services. Third Amendment with Superior Court on Collaborative Justice Treatment Court. Child Support has two MOUs with the IT Department and the Public Works Department. Finance has an item regarding Financial Audit Services Agreement. Health has four items on the Agreement with Dr. Milton Teske for Health Officer Services, Revision of the California Children's Service and Medical Therapy Program and Budget. Central California Food Bank Diaper Distribution MOU. Agreement with the Learning Education Group for Internship placements. HSA has three items in agreement with Fresno State Foundation for Motivational Interviewing Training, an MOU with the Kings County Department of Public Health for Home Visiting Services, and Elder Dependent Adult Abuse Awareness Month Proclamation. Public Works has three items. The Fund Allocation MOE Match Requirement, a contribution from the General Fund Contingencies, Resolution for San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District, and the Kettleman City Infrastructure Sidewalk Project. Sheriff has one item regarding cargo hook just for this sheriff office helicopter. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. One more thing to add on upcoming events in the community. This Saturday, downtown Hanford will have the Carnegie Car Show, which is probably about its fifth or sixth year. So looking forward to that. Move on now to closed session as outlined by council.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Government Code Section five, four, nine, five, six point nine. Conference with Legal Counsel Anticipated Litigation, Significant Exposure to Litigation Pursuant to Paragraph Two of Subdivision D of Section five, four, nine, five, six point nine of the Government Code. One case, J.G. Boswell claimed for damages. Government Code Section five, four, nine, five, six point nine. Conference with Legal Counsel Anticipated Litigation, Initiation of Litigation Pursuant to Paragraph Four of Subdivision D of Section five, four, nine, five, six point nine of the Government Code, Deciding Whether to Initiate Litigation, One Case. Government Code Section five, four, nine, five, seven, Public Employee Appointment/Employment Title Library Director. Government Code Section five, four, nine, five, seven, Public Employee Appointment/Employment Title Fire Chief. Government Code Section five, four, nine, five, seven point six, Conference with Legal Counsel Existing Litigation. Name of Case, El Rico, GSA, the County of Kings at Al. Kings County Superior Court Case Number twenty-three C U zero, two, zero, two. Government Code Section five, four, nine, five, seven point six, Conference with Labor Negotiators. Agency Designated Representatives, Kiri Martinez, Carolyn Leest, Jay Johnson of Libra Cassidy Whitmore. Employee Organizations, General Unit Clocia, Supervisors Unit Clocia, Blue Collar, S C I U, Detention Deputies Association, Firefighters Association, Deputy Sheriffs Association, Probation Officers Association, Prosecutors Association, and Unrepresented Management. And I'll turn it back to the chair for any public comment.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments? Any board comments? Saying none, we'll go ahead and we'll adjourn at this time until Tuesday, June tenth, twenty twenty-five, nine AM. We'll be back here at eleven o'clock for California Public Finance Authority Meeting and Community Housing Agency. Thank you.